It is August the 5th, 2021. It is 7:05 PM. I am Mike O'Reilly, the Chairman of the Commission. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands on the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we're having a hybrid electronic public meeting. As you all know, on March 14th, in response to COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor suspended in-person open meeting requirements. Accordingly, we have selected go-to meeting as our technology. We shall commit up to 250 people to participate. Any members of the public who desire to submit written information relative to the business set forth on the agenda may do so by 4:00 PM. I'm going to call the votes, starting on my right.
Ryan Johnson.
Leanne Brozick, Commissioner.
Bruno Mayini. Oh, sorry. Bruno Mayini, Commissioner.
Robert Westland, Commissioner.
Rick Shulstall, Planner.
And online, we have... It's Sarah. Going to go to public participation. Any members of the public here tonight that would like to speak to the Commission? Anybody here? Anybody online that would like to speak to the Commission on matters, not before the Commission or likely to come before the Commission? Any comments?
This is Pete Metropolis from 36 Timothy. I've got a question for the Commission. On May 24th, 2021, Attorney Steve Finn sent a letter regarding fill, on the temporary storage of fill. And I believe the Commission was looking for a legal letter of opinion from the town council. And I'm wondering if, after two months, if you guys figured out their letter correct? And they have the right to store fill on site used for another property? What was the outcome of that? That's my question.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. The municipal council is preparing a legal opinion for the Commission as we speak. She is on vacation and could not attend tonight's meeting. It was scheduled to be tonight. We are not meeting until September 2nd. But the Commission will, in fact, have that legal opinion before that meeting. So, Mr. Metropolis, it is forthcoming. It's going to be addressed.
Okay. And is this is... Well, Rick, are you aware that they're currently taking advantage and importing fill for that purpose?
Yeah, there are two sites in the community that I'm aware of. I recently received a manifest for the 64 Cambridge Drive. So, I'll be... I just received that today, and I'll be sharing that with the Commission. Actually, I'm giving that on my report tonight.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Metropolis. Is there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to address the Commission? Any members of the public that would like to address the Commission? Hearing none? Then we will move on to the public hearing section of the agenda. The first public hearing is SCP-2021-01A1, file number 1628A, Victoria Drive. Do you have new notices?
Planning and zoning commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held August 5th, 2021. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, August 5th, 2021, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid go-to meeting with access by phone and limited in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall, Council Chambers, 7 Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, concerning the following. SCP-2021-01A1, file number 1626A, Victoria Drive. Reduction of approved building from 10,000 square feet to 2,500 square feet and associated changes to onsite septic design, lighting plan, landscaping plan, erosion control, grading and drainage. FSI DUI05 LLC applicant, zoning district I-3, assessor's map 103, lot number 23. Published in voices, July 21st and July 28th.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Mr. Chairman, yes. Exhibit number one, need modification to SCP. Exhibit number two, notice of public hearing. Exhibit number three, town engineer's comment. Exhibit number four, notification to the town to trumble. That is all.
And for the applicant?
Evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Knuff. I'm an attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford. And I'm here today on behalf of FSI, which is the applicant and owner of the property at 10 Victoria Drive. Almost 25 acres, as you just noted. Just a quick recap. As you know, we received a wetland permit around last December or January. Then we were before this commission for a regulation amendment, a stop-section approval in April. And that's for a commercial vehicle facility as defined in your regulations. More recently, we were last here before you on July 1st. Sort of just as an informational basis to provide you an update of the project, indicate our strong preference for moving along with our work so that the facility can be opened in October. And then we explained how cooperative your full staff has been in regard to those efforts in doing site work and utility work. We also discussed some proposed changes to the approved plan. Most of those are sort of technical nature, and we're working with Scott Schottline very closely on those changes. In fact, Scott has submitted his comment letter on those changes, and we have no objection to any of his comments. So, we're fine with all those. And in particular, we're happy about the opportunity to increase the size of the above-ground detention pond. Obviously, you know, whenever you can increase the previous coverage on a site, that's a positive thing. You know, the one item that we discussed last time that does require your approval was either the elimination or the reduction of the size of the building. And that matched the application that's before you this evening, specifically to reduce the size of the approved building from 10,000 square feet to 2,500 square feet. And when we discussed this on July 1st, some of you were very candid in expressing your concerns about the potential elimination of the building. And in retrospect, I didn't do a very good job explaining the how and why of the reduction or elimination of buildings. So, this is sort of my opportunity for a do-over, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. So, let me provide you a little bit of history. We first met with your town staff more than a year ago to discuss the project. And we appeared for the Regulation Amendment Committee, I think, in August or September. And after going through the wetland process, we submitted our zoning application last December. And all during that time, even though a building is not required as part of a commercial vehicle facility as defined in your regulations, we proposed a 10,000-square-foot building that performs several functions such as office, bathrooms, break room, storage, based upon our tenants' requirements as we understood them at that time. And you approved the applications, of course, in April. While those 14 months from, you know, most people's perspective is not a terribly long time, you know, in the normal scheme of things, it is a very long time for a very large company that's literally writing the book on how to operate these facilities as efficiently as possible and therefore constantly evolving and approving, you know, how these sites function. So, while we were working with the town over those 14 months, our tenant was also making changes down the road at their main facility. And so, which resulted in centralizing even more functions at that location and thereby reducing the need for a building on our property. So, just as a refresher, and because it's the operations that are really important in terms of understanding the fact that we want to reduce the size of the building. What will happen at this site is, starting around 9:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, waves of drivers, perhaps, you know, 30 or more drivers will come every 20 minutes or half hour or so, drive their personal vehicle onto the site, literally spend seconds outside that vehicle, enter a van, and immediately drive off and head to Trumbull to that facility where they will have full ability to use that building, whether it's bathroom, rest, break room, whatever they need, will all be located or aren't all located at that facility in Trumbull. Once the vans leave the site in the morning, the site is absolutely quiet for the bulk of the day until the vans return later at night after making the last delivery, sort of around 9 o'clock in the evening or so. So, for the most part, drivers are simply driving out to the site, hopping into a van, driving away, coming back at night, hopping to their personal vehicle, again, driving away. On the odd occasion that one of those drivers needs to use a restroom, those restrooms are going to be available in the guardhouse. The 10,000-square-foot building is going to be available for the storage that we had originally planned in the much larger building. So, if there is a need to add restrooms in the future in the building, we can certainly do that based upon our subject design. Chris Gagnon from BL Companies is with us here this evening virtually. And I'm going to ask him to share his screen so we can show you the site plan. But I just want to ask you to keep a few things in mind. The new building, like the original building, will never be seen from the streets because the topography of the site and where the building sits is far below Route 25. The 10,000-square-foot building and the proposed 2,500-square-foot building would never be seen. Any building on the site, whether it's 2,500 square feet, 10,000 square feet, or 25,000 square feet, is going to be a very, very small presence on the site in the context of our 25-acre sites. So, given the ratio of, you know, the very small building, again, no matter if it's 10,000 or 2,500, to the 25-acre sites, it really doesn't have much or any impact on property taxes that my clients would be paying. Rick nevertheless has asked us to dress the building up a little bit with a stone veneer at the base or skirts. And we're happy to make that accommodation. And obviously, nothing that we're proposing as part of these changes, including the building, does anything to modify the extremely robust landscaping plan that you approved in April. So, I appreciate the opportunity to have another chance to address you and explain the basis for the reduction of the size of the building. Chris can walk you through the site plan and demonstrate why the reduction in size of the building creates an opportunity for increasing the size of the detention pond. I know that you don't have any other meetings in August. And so, if you feel comfortable at the end of our discussion and we're happy to answer the questions, we would really love it if we could close the hearing this evening and vote. So, with that, I'm going to ask Chris to just briefly show me the location of the building and what happens as a result of that.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Gagnon. I'm a professional engineer with BL Companies. We are at 355 Research Parkway in Meriden, Connecticut. And thank you so much for taking the time to meet with us today. Essentially, the only real change to the site plan... Previously, we had approximately a building located in this area. And that building in that area, it ate up a lot of real estate in this neighborhood. The new proposed building is located in this area here. And that allows us to provide almost twice the size pond than we originally proposed, an above-ground excavated stormwater detention pond. That change allowed us to reduce the size of the underground detention system that is located in this area here. So, that is really the significant change to the site plan along with the reduction of the size of the building. I don't know what it looks like on your guy's big screen, but I can zoom in a little here. And then, as you also see, located adjacent to it is where the guard shack is located as well. So, the site amenities will be fairly close together. And like I said, the real important change is that this allowed us to almost double the size of the above-ground detention pond, which for the longevity of the project, overall maintenance, there's a long list of reasons why this is a preferable option to underground detention and storage. I had long conversations with Scott Schottline over the past week or so about the project. He provided his comments, and we are fully on board with accepting those comments as conditions of approval should we decide to go that direction. Couple other items that should be noted as part of this plan set is, we originally had proposed retaining walls in this area. However, upon further review of the geotechnical analysis, we have determined that, much like the previous site and the previous approvals, those walls could be replaced with a rock face cut, which, again, long-term maintenance viability, use of the site, retaining walls are structures that need to be maintained. And replacing that with a rock cut is a much more sustainable development in the long run. So, most of the changes were on this sheet. However, you know, the retaining wall also extended to this side of the site as well. So, that has been replaced. That's really it. The stormwater detention on this side of the world did not change at all. So, that's really the extent of it. John, I don't know if there were any other key points that you wanted me to hit on, but I think this is what we discussed for me.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the presentation. I mean, obviously, very straightforward. A simple reduction of 7,500 square feet to the building for the reasons I articulated. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Knuff. Take some questions from the Commissioners first. Starting on my right.
No questions.
And then?
Okay, your client, I'm putting just up a steel building.
I'm sorry?
The plans that I got in front of here, it looks like this is still building with a garage door and one single door to get in there.
Right. It's a building primarily designed for storage, correct?
Right. So, it's nothing like... You have the old design building that we approved?
We didn't have the details.
Or the building that we approved?
It was just generic.
Being generic.
We never talked about the building.
So, we never went to Architectural Review Board, none of that stuff?
It did, but it was still very generic, and they were coming back to the Commission on the final.
All right. So, we approved a 10,000-square-foot building. And we approved it because, basically, we wanted to get a building on that property and for you to park your vehicles there. And on top of it all, we changed our regulations to allow you to park vehicles on that property. And, you know, 10,000 was kind of small at the time for that piece of property in the first place. But, you know, I believe most of these Commissioners agree that 10,000 was a good building. And now, all of a sudden, last meeting, you decide you don't want to put a building on it. What happens if the vehicles aren't parked there anymore? What kind of a tax revenue are we going to get off that piece of property? If there's no vehicles there?
In terms of maintenance, I mean, we never proposed... I mean, it was always very clear from the beginning that no maintenance would ever take place on this site. And frankly, you don't want any maintenance to take place.
We didn't. But we approved a building.
No, no, no. I understand what you're saying.
Because we changed our regulations to accommodate for this. And basically, then, all of a sudden, you come back in and say, well, you want to move along, and then come to find out that you don't want to put the building.
I understand.
And so, that's like saying that, well, in the first place, maybe you never wanted to put the building. And I think this Commission, I mean, on my part, I don't think I would have just put a parking lot. So, that's where I stand on that.
I understand.
Now, looking at this, this is just a generic steel building you're going to throw up there. Has no architect to it, has nothing to it. And I understand you say it's down in the hole. I got all that. But on the other point, that, you know, that's just my opinion, that what happens when the vehicles go off the property and you're no longer here? It's a parking lot. There is no... We're not going to get anything out of a parking lot. And so, you keep on bringing that up. This is only like 1% of it or whatever, the building. But on the long term, if you move along with your vehicles and they're not here anymore, then it's an empty parking lot. And so, that's where I stand on this. I don't know about the rest of the Commissioners.
Commissioner Mayini.
Happy to respond if I could.
Feel free.
Okay, thank you. So, the 10,000-square-foot building was designed to reflect what we understood the needs of our tenants were at the time. As indicated, you know, I understand that, from your perspective, and I think it's a fair one, that it was a fairly rapid change. As I indicated, you know, these sites are constantly evolving. They're building these across the country at a rather rapid pace, and they're learning from, you know, the process. And that happens with every large company. I know that your concern is that, should this no longer be used as a parking facility, you know, then what is left? First of all, this use is not leaving. This use is going to be, if anything, expanding in this area. And, you know, one of the benefits of a large 25-acre site like this is that there is an opportunity to do something else in the future. We don't know what that is. I'm certainly not going to make you a promise that something else is going to happen here. But this use is not going to be leaving the site at any time in the near future. There's obviously another facility down the street that needs to be served. I don't think... Let's say, for instance, however, that the use did leave. Whether the building is 10,000 square feet or 2,500 square feet, or, as I said, 25,000 square feet, it's not going to make an appreciable difference from any perspective. Another tenant couldn't move in and utilize that building for any real purpose. We're simply trying to reflect the needs of our tenants in a way that maximizes tax revenue for the town because, really, the majority of your revenue, the vast majority, is coming from the vehicle taxes and certainly some from the real property and virtually none from the building that's going to be located there.
No. I have all that. I'm saying to you is that we approved it on a 10,000-square-foot building. We worked around it. We didn't require you to make a bigger building. We didn't require you to do anything more. And we worked around it to do all that. And then, all of a sudden, you come back and you say, well, we don't want the building. And then, you figure that, when I talked to you last time, you figure that this is not going to work. So, let's just go to 2,500 square foot. But it still doesn't work for me. And it's only me. I'm only talking to you from... So, I'd like to hear what the rest of the Commissioners have to say.
Commissioner Mayini.
I have an issue with this. This property is... It's a gateway to our town. See it from the road or not, there's other buildings down there that you can't see from the road but are very viable, and a lot of people go to. The last thing I would ever approve for this town here on this property or any other property is a parking lot. And that's what, basically, this is. This is basically a parking lot with a... I won't use the real words, but not the nicest of buildings going on it. The 10,000-square-foot building was too small for the property to start with. And then, to reduce it by three-quarters is definitely too small. On a gateway property, it's no good for me. Not... I'm not into this one at all. But, again, I speak for myself, and that's where I stand.
Hey, Commissioner Westland.
I'd like to think that we, as a Commission, welcome, you know, new businesses and especially emerging companies into Monroe with open arms. But I do feel that the site is disproportionately designed with the reduced size building at this point. And I'm more comfortable with the 10,000-square-foot facility that we originally approved. You know, the building offers the town a solid, permanent structure, you know, to balance the site out. And the tax revenue stays with the town unlike a van that can drive away. So, I also have an issue with it. I like the 10,000-square-foot building on that property much better.
Any questions or...
That's it. That's it. Well... The issue is, we would be building a building purely for building a building's sake and not for any real function. Candidly, I don't know what benefit is to be derived from that. From a building that will not be seen, cannot be seen, that will be largely vacant except maybe a corner will be used for some storage. So, as I noted, from a real property tax perspective, even if there were no vans, it, I think, would barely move the needle, whether it's 25,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet or 2,500 square feet. You know, this is an opportunity for us to increase the stormwater detention basin, which is something that Scott Schottline was very enthused about. I think that, you know, if you look at what a commercial vehicle facility is, in most cases, they wouldn't have any building there at all. And I understand that we asked for and you approved a regulation so that we could locate one of these facilities at this location. Obviously, its location down the street from Trumbull was critical to that component. But at the end of the day, a commercial vehicle facility isn't required to have a building for very obvious reasons. We would really respectfully request that you, you know, consider our request very strongly because otherwise, we're going to be... It'll be a building that is really serving no function of any kind.
Okay. Well, I have no problems with you going from a small building to a smaller building. I think you agreed to all of the changes that your engineer has requested as well. Do you want to consult with your client?
Yeah, if you could, just have a moment.
Hi. Phil DeGeno, for the record, with FSI. I totally understand what you guys are saying. I really do. But I want to just explain to you that this division of this company is six years old. Okay? It started in 2016, it's the first facility that we started. But they started rolling out deliveries. John is absolutely correct in saying it changes all the time. This is the largest company in the world. They know how to operate their properties better than anybody. And that's why they are what they are today. So, when they tell us, we just don't need that building. It's not meant to insult the board. It's not meant to retrade the deal. It's not meant to do that. It's better... It's meant to more efficiently operate because that's what they're all about. They're not into waste. You know, I remind everybody that the revenue from the vans, and this is a very long-term transaction with them, is monstrous compared to the building. The building is not visible and, again, has no function. And, again, we're not trying to retrade. We're just trying to satisfy our client, keep our tenant happy so that they can operate to the way they operate. So, I guess I would respectfully ask you all to reconsider.
So, you're the property owner?
Yes.
Manager? So, I mean, we all know that this is private property. And property owners do have a right to develop their property and make an income on their property. You know, we've gone down this road a long way now to stop now. I don't think that's a reasonable thing to do. I'm in favor of this application. But it doesn't sound like you have the votes. I'm not sure if...
Do we have to open this up to the public?
Yes. I'm not sure if you want to close the hearing tonight or not, but want to consider that. I don't really have anything else to say. We'll open it to the public now since it's a public hearing. Are there any members of the public with us tonight? If there are, please come down to the podium. Just identify yourself, name and address for the record. Just identify yourself, name and address for the record.
My name is John Delage, I live on Hickory Lane, 4 Hickory Lane. So we got bought this property. My question is, when they made the changes and they were gonna increase the size of the retention pond, has that caused more blasting? We have been, when I say blasted out of our house, three or four times a day. And I don't know what long-term damage there possibly could be. But I would say this, if you live there...
Excuse me, sir, sir, don't address them, address us.
I would say that if they live there, or you live there, you'd be concerned about that too. Now, in addition to that, would this increase the number of parking places? And increase the number of lights that come out? I mean, I'm right in the back of there. So that's my comments.
Thank you.
Rick, I believe the blasting is done there, no?
The blasting is not done.
Oh, I asked Rick.
Yeah, but it's not done.
Okay, I still didn't ask you.
The blasting is in its final phase, it's not gonna, I thought they were all done blasting.
No, I thought, on this property, I thought they were done.
That's... For the record, John, the blasting is complete.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nunn.
I just wanna state that my office was not made aware of that, but...
When was it completed?
For the record. Really recently, within the past couple, you know, past week or two.
Yeah, thank you.
Other members of the public?
Good evening, my name is Lois Spence, 29 Partridge Drive. I am not a direct butter, but I hear the blasting several times a day. And it went on as of a couple of days ago, so it was not within the last couple of weeks. I didn't notice any today or the previous day, so. I wanna say that I don't agree with reducing the size of the building. I think it's a good idea that we have a substantial building, even though it's not, it's only one quarter of 1% of the size of the property, which is really kind of tiny. And, Amazon changes, like everybody has said, minute by minute. What is the likelihood, is this gonna be long-term, very long-term? I don't think so. Look how far it's come in such a short period of time. They'll probably go with electric vehicles, which would be great, I wish they would. But then there's gonna be drones, we have no idea how fast the technology is advancing. So to make vast considerations for something that may only be here for a very short time may not make a lot of sense from a tax standpoint. And that's what I'm concerned about the most. Secondary is precedent. It's very important that you be consistent. If anybody comes to you with a huge change, like especially like this, then anybody else coming up behind them at a future time can say, "Well, you did it for them, now you can do it for me." And if you don't, then I can, I can do things. And that's something that has happened, I mean, I've been watching this board and the weapons board for the last 20 years. And I've seen it happen a lot. So, I just wanna have you aware that this is something that has been having longer-term repercussions, and I want you to take that into consideration when you make a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Spence. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment or pose questions on this application? Hearing none, that will go back to the applicant, Tony Nunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Considering what we just witnessed, we're gonna withdraw the application and we'll, you know, give some thought as to whether there's another avenue for us to explore. But clearly, as you noted, Mr. Chairman, we don't have the votes, so we will stick with our current approval. You know, obviously based upon the 10,000 square foot building, and if we think there's an opportunity to come back to you again to something that might be more palatable, then we'll do so.
Thank you, your turn, Tony.
Thank you.
All right, so we will be closing this hearing as the applicant has withdrawn the application. Moving along, the next public hearing is, we're opening this one, correct? EFP 2021-01. File number 10564 Cambridge Drive, 4 Independence Drive. Commissioner Condon, do you have the notices?
Yes. SCP-2021-08, file number 1633A, 169 Enterprise Drive. Application for the construction of two buildings to be used as offices and production. Arstone LLC, applicant zoning district I2, assessor map 094...
Wait a minute, you're on the wrong one, I believe.
What are we doing?
Arstone, this is 64 Cambridge Drive.
No, we're not doing 64 Cambridge Drive.
That's withdrawn.
That's what you...
Yeah, it's withdrawn, yeah.
We're not opening that then.
We're going to number six.
Acknowledging that the application has been withdrawn.
Okay, then, we're going on to number six then on the agenda.
District I2, assessor map 094015, flash 24. Published in voices twice on July 21st and July 28th.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. Rick, do you have the exhibits?
Yes, exhibit number one, the application. Exhibit number two, the town engineer comments. And, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to acknowledge that the applicant still needs to go before the architectural review, so this hearing needs to be continued to the September 6th.
Do we have someone here for the applicant tonight? Can you just identify yourself, name and address for the record?
Good evening, I'm Joe Tovadar, in Alabot, Trumbull, Connecticut. We're here on behalf of Arstone Company, and I'm shop manager and the owner as well. As you guys see, we have the permit for SCP-169 Enterprise Drive, which is for the construction of our two buildings. One building is gonna be primarily just for production, the other building is gonna have a lot of facilities starting in production. We're also gonna have some facilities in the yard, the property does about Newtown. Newtown has approved all the activities of which we'd like to partake in on the property. And we're here tonight just seeking approval to continue with our project, so we can get the project.
Do you have any presentation that you'd like to go through, or...
What do you guys, I could, we could talk about anything, like, now we have Alan for the engineering we have, anything architectural, scope of the company, anything you guys like to know?
I'm gonna wait. You got any?
Go ahead.
Do you have any architectural review or anything like that?
Uh, this is the architectural plan that we did in a packet, and Dean brought it.
I don't think it's here.
It's in the last two pages.
Can you just give an overview?
Yeah, so it's gonna be two steel buildings, Alan emphasized. Actually 20 feet tall, we'll have the stone veneer facade around them. The one building, which is on the property line, is going to have the office in the front. But the facade, ground on porch, the offices aren't gonna be as tall as the rest of the buildings. Basically, through the street, you're just gonna see the buildings, the lot, landscaping, activities that take place in Newtown.
Yeah, on this one.
No, I see that, but I mean...
Trying to see both of them.
But I don't see...
So this gotta go through the architectural review? Has to go before the, yes.
And then, obviously, you guys can, there's all the building, obviously, we had the architecture all up, it's not till we're finished yet. This is more preliminary plan, we're gonna have our foundation plan submitted once we've approved our activities on the site.
So you don't have it?
It's actually a generic plan, it's just...
Generic, right, yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it's, you know, we don't have the total finished-out plan, steel building. And then, we'll submit a more, you know, copy, so we can use it.
It's recommended that we have a level... And then we...
Yeah, because our speaker, the architect, he said this should be sufficient to get through the review board, and then if anything that's like changed or whatnot, then he'll go ahead and change it to, you know, meet the criteria of what they're looking for. And then we could come back, extra review board, once that's satisfied, we'll come back and see you guys.
I don't think so. This is Newtown back there, this is all Monroe, all the buildings.
So the property is on, it's in Newtown, yeah?
No, no, I see that, but like, on your art, on your painting plan here?
Page seven.
Page seven, it's cut off, like, there's nothing on the other side there, if you can see.
Which part?
Like here.
Partnered with firm in Oak House, King John. There should have been a overall landscape plan, that was just the landscape of the wetlands. But if you don't have it, I will talk to landscape architect.
Right, 'cause, yeah, 'cause we don't, I don't see any...
Yeah, that was just the plan put it back for the detail on the mountains. It should be a whole landscape plan. And I will also make sure that the architect talks to Rick Schultz about the details of the... Can you just give a summary that, that the site is able to accommodate the septic and, you know, drainage while you're here? And, basically, what the applicant does is they cut stone for the sides of buildings, which seems to be the way to go in that area for construction. They've been around for a while, they like to relocate, remodel. So basically, what they do is they cut this, they crack the stone, and then they cut it, sack it, strip it out. They go burying in some material, that were in the Newtown side, raw material, which is stones. And they get a good deal, or someone's cutting a property or excavating somewhere. And it depends on the stump, so they gotta take a look at it. And then they self-contained water treatment system for their cutting wheels. Basically, there are a couple of comments in the folder from the town engineer that we have some... Town engineer said the back of the building was fairly flat. And we would look for it that way, 'cause they have guys with tow motors playing out with...
Yeah, I can explain the production process further if you guys are interested. Basically, as Alan started to, you know, get into, the raw stone comes from the quarries of... One of the buildings, the building, the larger building, is gonna house the stones for the cement. Where the stones brought, it's put onto the machine in the building, the stones split into a shape where... Then palletized, we install the pallets. Then, in the other building, we're gonna have our saws, as you were saying, a self-contained water system. The water salves the dust, so there's no dust from the production process. The stones cut, palletized, they're on trucks, and then delivered to our customers all throughout the region. Basically, as you're saying, we bring in the raw product, it's processed into a shape, palletized, brought back out.
And that's the key part, once they palletize it, they get it out of there. You know, you, it's funny to me that, how many trucks do you have a day?
There's limited truck traffic coming in, and we only, you know, the stone grows a pretty current amount. We have, I would say, three or four reload bulk a day, and then we'll have one to two tractor trailers hauling out our finished product every day. So it's not like, it's a quarry where we have trucks lined up at 6:00 in the morning till, you know, 5:00 at the end of the day, hauling out, you know, a load of gravel, a load of sand or whatnot. It's more of a, I'm gonna do as much quantity because the product is worth more.
And they're not a, they sell, use, from self-directed customers?
Yeah, it's not gonna be a retailer or anything, it's a whole set, you know, it's a production plan, and then it's just shipped out to the wholesale customers, we're not gonna have a line of masons lined up or anything along...
Who you guys would sell to?
We're not open to the public, we're like, we're the processor, manufacturer, whatever you wanna consider. It's not like, it's a mason yard, that's what I was saying, or, you know, almost like a Home Depot or a supply house.
So for traffic.
So Mike can't bring his pickup truck over there and grab some veneer stuff?
Be a cutting and processing done inside buildings?
Inside the buildings, yeah.
What are the hours of operation?
The hours are gonna be 7:00 to 5:30, Monday through Friday, at 7:00 to 12:00 on Saturdays, and overtime if needed.
And roughly how many employees?
Um, when we move through, it'll probably be about 40 to 50 employees, somewhere in that range. You know, it depends on the needs of the company and what, you know, the market's like at the time.
And you need, and you need this property flat for what reason?
So, basically, as Alan was getting into, once we move in those labs, or, you know, they're heavier, or your pallets of stone, the more it's slope side is, as you could think, you pick something up, center of gravity's effect, and if you don't wanna pick stuff up tilted, you know, the risk of roll over and whatnot. And that's why we have a pretty thorough drainage plan planned out, so we can have a relatively flat site, and then, you know, accommodate the runoff and that.
And we're not opposed, it'll be their parking lot that they have to work in. They're not opposed to adding another catch basin here or there they need it, because they would rather have an operational...
It's paramount to have the yard be more level to accommodate for, you know, as traffic during the day from the machine and whatnot.
For safety?
Yeah, for safety, but you know, like, you pick something up, we all wanna see a machine.
Yeah, we realize that, and it's not open to the public, so...
What kind of machinery do you have on this property?
Forklifts and then front loaders.
That's it?
We don't have crushers or any of that stuff, as I was saying, it's just stone splitters, the hydraulic press that breaks the stone.
Yeah, but those are inside?
Those are inside the building.
Now, everything's self-contained inside the building, you said?
Yeah, so we'll have the overhead doors, as you can see on the rough architectural plan, there's the overhead doors, stone will be loaded through the doors, everything on the works done inside, palletized inside, sorted inside and whatnot, and then it's finished, then we go to the other building, which is also inside as well.
I'm assuming you have some sort of...
Yeah, so on the splitting building, we have a dust collection system, and in the other building, Alan's, we have a water system, which salves the dust as we're cutting it. You know, so it sprays the blade with water, catches the dust, circulates out, so a lot of sediment in it.
Do you guys need to clean the outside of this facility every so often, or...
In terms of like the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yep, so that's what we do.
You have a street sweeper or something on the property?
Have a street sweeper regularly, just sweep the parking lot and you'll clean up sediment. And we also use water with calcium mixed in, you know, for the dust, so that way as you drive around, it's not, you know, blowing dust up.
Excellent.
Yeah, they've been in business for a number of years.
Yeah, we've been operating in Bridgeport for about seven years now. Doing the same process, we just wanna move through and route the developed facility that's more apt to our needs and something that's gonna work a little bit better for us.
I mean, it's quite a building, it's pretty big, so it's awesome.
The building's obviously in Monroe, the rest of the property...
Yeah, so there's not been any buildings in Newtown, Newtown's just gonna be for outdoor storage. There's already outdoor storage going on in the parcel there, so we're just gonna use that for outdoor storage to work with the stores last year in Monroe, and the buildings will be in Monroe, and whatnot.
And that does bring up, I did want to bring up another comment. The town engineer was asking to have us review the drainage in Newtown. And I'm not interested in that, we got approval for Newtown. That was a, what we have is a lined pond, and that was for a manure pile. It's a lined pond, and then it has another pond, recharge pond, if you will, off of it. And stabilized, it's there, I don't wanna go underneath the liner, I don't wanna rip it apart, I don't wanna recreate the world.
That's in Newtown?
Yeah, that's in Newtown, Newtown.
Yeah, I don't think we're allowed to...
Yeah, I'm not interested in that.
If it's not, if it's not Monroe, man, we're, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Barely speak for Monroe.
The, uh, one other comment, and we're okay with the other comments, we'll do it on, you know...
So you'll work with Scott on the, if you need an extra drain?
Well, maybe we'll talk a couple, healthcare services, whatever.
If you're gonna work with him, that's great.
Yeah, and, and that's fine, and the only other thing is wanting some landscaping in the front of the building for landscaping elements. And we only have 32 spaces, 33 or 4 spaces. I would prefer this through the landscaping, not the hill, which I'll get you guys a plan if you don't have. Because we don't wanna have any parking in the front, I don't really wanna take it away from the parking...
I kinda have a dumb question right now. If you're gonna have 40 to 50 employees and 32 parking spaces, something doesn't add up.
I got parking in the back for something.
And there's parking in front of Newtown as well.
There it is, parking Newtown.
Ah ha!
So, so, but the office people, I'd like to keep them in front, I don't want...
It's just gonna be a spread parking area.
It's a, it's good work for people, but it's tough jobs. So the guys, the people in the back, they don't have the fanciest cars, you know?
The office people have the fancy cars.
Yeah.
Good to know.
Isn't that the way it always works out?
So they say.
They work hard.
And basically too, uh, one of the main reasons, obviously, you know, we're going to go ahead with the project. We're looking to get some sort of approval so we can continue with the process of purchasing, securing the property and, you know, continuing the planning, getting the more detailed plan and whatnot. You know, obviously there's going to be some contingencies and some things to work out. Just get, you know, not, maybe not a hundred percent yes tonight, but, um, yeah, towards, you know, it's almost like something that we'd like to go ahead with, you know, see take place in town.
I feel like it's exactly the type of business that we're trying to attract.
I mean, I, I don't think we can give you like a.
Can we have an approval, like, contingent on architecture or review board?
No, we can't do that either.
We have, we have deficiencies that have to be addressed.
Okay.
So let's draft it for consensus.
Asking for a bar.
Yeah, we're asking for like, you know.
A consensus. Let's go to the commissioner. We'll start with the commissioner.
Conley.
Conley?
Making you an Irishman.
I am an Irishman. Uh, yeah, I know. I like it a lot. Um, I would, uh, be moving towards an approval.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it. Like I said, I just want to see the landscape plan that was messed up and then, uh, see what the architect or review board does.
Um, I'm in agreement with Leon. The landscape plan, I'd like to see that and ARB, but I have no problem.
Yeah, absolutely no issues. Just want to see final plan, that's all. Thumbs up.
All right, let's go to the, um, public. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment or question, um, on this application? Uh, any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Hearing none, then, uh, this application will be left open until our next meeting, uh, September the sixteenth.
You think you guys could have that all done by then?
Yes.
For sixteen?
And I thought the landscape.
Yeah.
The meeting on the second?
It's because of ARB.
Yeah, but ARB meets after the second, so you can't come here on the second.
It would have happened, but they took.
I mean, you can come here every week if you want.
Some board's taken.
Good presentation. Kevin, yours should be more like this.
Slowly taking, slowly taking notes on this one?
That was messed up.
All right, we have, um, final public hearing tonight.
Nope, I think there's two more.
Two more? I have one more.
I have, for, I have.
You probably have Cambridge Drive there.
I have Monroe Turnpike and I have.
The other one didn't make it, uh, the.
Who's the tonic? Okay.
The one we do have is Monroe Turnpike.
Why are you trying to make this thing longer than it is?
He didn't listen.
You made him Irish and look what happens.
Listen.
Tom, Irish.
All right, so we have SCP twenty twenty-one dash oh nine, file one six three nine, Gretchen, one six three four eight, fifteen sixty-five Monroe Turnpike. Commissioner Condon. You have the notices.
Uh, yep. SCP twenty twenty-one zero nine, file number one six three four A, one five six five Monroe Turnpike. SB two, parcel two, special exception permit application. Use for property located at fifteen sixty-five Monroe Turnpike for change of business use. Stevenson Properties LLC, by Kimball Investments LLC, Jill Kimball, manager. Applicant Lebon Yard LLC by Johnny Ramsey, president. One five six five Monroe Turnpike. Assessment map one five zero lot one. Uh, notice was published in voices twice on July twenty-first and July twenty-eighth.
Back to you. And, uh, Rick, you have the exhibits?
Yes, uh, exhibit number one, the, uh, application submission. Number two is comments from the health department. Number three, comments from the engineering department. And, uh, number three, revised plans submitted by the applicant. And number five, certified mail, uh, return receipts. Number six, bond estimate. And that is all.
Okay, and for the applicants we have tonight?
Um, John Kimball, uh, consultant, uh, to the family adjustments. Um, I'm here with, uh, um, Sir Jack, who is our, um, Anthony Gago, who is, uh, the owner of Gago Provisions, uh, who will be the eventual, uh, owner and user, uh, of this property, uh, and, uh, process. Uh, Larry Edwards from Edwards Associates, the design engineer. Uh, Chris Howell from CAH Architects. And, uh, Tracy Chalfo from, uh, Tracy Chalfo was a, uh, landscape designer. So we've got a, a full team. Um, and we can have a few, uh, as much as you want, but try and keep it as, as summarized as we can. Larry, go. We just don't.
Yeah, how do we get this from here to here?
It's up here, but it's not.
Yeah, uh, we had difficulty.
Yeah, Bruno can stand up.
Definitely not.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I, I meant to check with IT. Remember the last time when Kevin finally figured it out?
Uh, he, uh, he manipulated it.
So everyone's here and you want to project using this?
Well, we have, the commissioners have the hard copies and, uh, if you can.
We've got hard copies too and we've got some core.
Don't you log into go to meeting on the, on the laptop and you probably can get it that way?
Yeah, if you log into this, it should let you share the screen. So.
All the files on that laptop or do you have a?
Yeah, I have my own, um.
Yeah, if you log into go to meeting, then Donna can make you the presenter and then boom.
Yeah.
Who's the presenter?
Chamber. Chamber. Whatever.
It's right up on the screen here. See what I did? Here's the presenter.
All right, why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Okay. Since everybody left.
Can you make MO presenter?
Oh, thanks, Ryan.
Then they.
There's always a couple ways.
Somebody has to then give you permission and then.
That's the step we should have done, Kevin.
Well, you guys, okay. We got the webcam working. Perfect.
My, double thanks.
Really? I'm just excited that we're gonna hopefully be switching to Zoom, I think, eventually. Maybe. That's what I heard.
Now we just need a commission.
Yeah, just mute the computer. Just mute the laptop. There we go.
We need to turn this back on, right?
Yes, we do.
Give it a tap. Oh, Leon's not here? I know. I need a haircut.
And you heard us, the Masonry skirt for the two.
I think you're the commissioner. We're here tonight. And all the commissioners were here tonight.
I didn't know.
I'm Scott, second.
Well, it's a band. Was it just a band? I, I haven't compared the two.
We've been, this one's not on the agenda.
But as for if you do deliberation tonight, if you close it and do deliberation, it prepares this one.
This is the last?
This is the one that's coming up right now. The, the occupants for Stevenson really want to move and clean the buildings up. You can hear it tonight. They got a color scheme, so.
Good.
Soon as we see a new paint, a coat of paint, it's big.
It'll go a long way.
It's gone. Yeah, a long way.
Answer it every time.
Twelve years of. What?
Okay, so yours is on the separate.
This is the override out for us.
That's the one I want.
Okay.
Do.
I guess we're not going on the screen. They're not there.
No, they are. Yeah. Cindy figured it out, Leah.
Cindy wants to know where we went.
Okay, it's, um, made our way. We're going to reconvene the August the fifth, two thousand twenty-one Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And, uh, we have that presentation. Who wants to go first?
I do, I think. Uh, we, we just got Scott's revised comments back, so that's why we're just looking at this first so we can answer them. Uh, my name is Larry Edwards, professional engineer with offices two twenty-seven, Stephanie Road, Easton. Um, this drawing is the easiest one to see. I got a larger one and a, you know, forgotten second. Basically, uh, this is parcel number two of the original master plan. The ground driveway is, it shows coming right in here. We didn't show the driveway itself because that's a quick.
It's yours.
So we're just showing what's enclosed on parcel two itself. Um, this is the existing, uh, building, um, that's there now. There's also a secondary building back here that was a storage, uh, open storage shed. Uh, and, uh, basically everything from here to the east of, in the properties primarily is all paved. Uh, so we are, as part of our, uh, plan, uh, proposing to do, um. This, again, is, is the same plan. Uh, this is a blow up of the plan to the, on the front portion of the property. Uh, again, this is the property built, um, the architect to get into the details of what's exactly happening in there. But, uh, this is, again, following the same format that we had in the, in the master plan. We have an area of parking in the front of the building, um, that will service a upper floor, which is going to be designated external retail. Uh, so we provide parking here for, for that portion of the, uh, proposed site's usage. Uh, we have landscaping, which will, uh, landscape architect will go over the, say, areas in front, our landscape, um, along the building. There'll be landscaping in the, in the sidewalk entrance comes into it. Uh, and then you're basically going to come down the, the proposed access road will have the main entrance on the lower level, which will be the access for, uh, for the trucks, uh, and the, uh, office staff for the, uh, facility, uh, which this second parking area down in the lower level will service, um, the offices for the, uh, uh, the, uh, distribution facility itself. And, um, also, it can also, it's an overflow for the, um, retail upstairs. There's inside store, uh, stairs that will get to down to the, uh, as you go around the back, uh, there's some additional parking along here. Um, and the back of the building is basically a loading dock along the whole back of the building. Um, we're showing here the, uh, tractor trailer, which would be for bringing your, your whole material into the site, stored, refrigerated things inside. And then, um, if you continue around, and this goes up to an upper level, this will be an access road, which is here, that comes up to the top portion. And, um, this is the level that has this, um, open shed. And here we're proposing, this is where the sixteen delivery trucks will be stored. Uh, there'll be, uh, eight of them along here and then eight of them will actually be in the shed. So they're going to utilize the shed for, for keeping those trucks. And then we have provided parking up here for those truck drivers to bring the cars in, park their trucks up, um, and either go down and load up or they may be overloaded already. Uh, we are also proposing, uh, to have electrical stations along the front here where the trucks will, because of refrigerated trucks overnight, they can be hitched into electric service. Um, and likewise, there'll be electrical outlets in the shed, which will provide those trucks with, uh, access for, um, for overnight hitch up. Um, the site, uh, as I said, is majority of it is paved now. Uh, we are doing, um, uh, landscaping that will provide for, um, I believe it's, I think it's eleven percent that we're, we're proposing to, uh, reduce the, um, the impervious area, uh, the, the state's, uh, stormwater, or the state in both state and local stormwater plan requires us to do two percent, so we're going to far in excess of that. Uh, we've got landscaping along the building here. This whole area here is presently, um, paved. That's going to be all grass. And then we're also proposing the grass along the edges here, along the edges of the parking here. And, um, in addition to what's we have up in the front of the building. So, uh, we, more than that, the requirements of the, um, of the town engineers and the town of Monroe, uh, reducing, uh, services. And that is the method that we use to provide for, uh, reduce flow from the site because we reduce any amount of impervious area so there'll be less runoff from the site. We still are proposing to, uh, install a stormwater, uh, quality system, which will consist of a, uh, or technic, uh, dynamic separating unit. Uh, and in this case, we are putting in one larger unit, which will service both the, uh, site for parcel two and also the, uh, site for parcel one. And we provided all the calculations for both sites and that's in size to handle that. So and that will be down to the rear portion of. So that will be down to the rear portion of building number one, and it'll be guided to the system that runs through the total site. And that has all been reviewed by the other town engineer. We've got, we had his list of comments, we responded to those. And he has one comment, basically, that he's, he wanted us to do, and we requested that. He wanted us to put islands in, in parking spaces for these trucks. And we would sooner not do that at this point. You know, there is a potential for this upper level to be an expansion area for the employer. So we have more than enough landscape area, we would sooner not put the landscaping in on the upper level at this time, besides what we're doing across the front of this parking area.
Is it just one island?
Well, we're just discussing, and I'm not sure I understand what he wants, but
John, do you know what he wants?
Yeah, I was just trying to read it. It's John Kimble for the record. And it's the area. Basically, to end cap this, and this with landscape area, and also put a landscape end cap here. There already is one on this end. And, you know, we're trying to be a little flexible, you know. That whole area is paved right now, and so it's not like we're, you know, we're not, it's not traditional where we're just building things from scratch and, you know, trying to eliminate, we're trying to be practical to where we put it. We're looking at that as an expansion area for the next building, for the company that's taking it over. And we, as Larry said, we've already done an 11% reduction in impervious surface and added hydrodynamic separators. We've added a lot of green area to the, to the plan. So if the commission could see their way to not requiring that. But if indeed you wanted it, we would accept it as a condition of approval.
Would it be difficult for the trucks to get out of the, out of the garage?
Well, that's one of the reasons we were leaving it open, because, you know, the trucks, they're gonna wanna move freely in there. They're good sized trucks, they're not, they're not tractor trailers, but they're, you know, full sized, you know.
Yeah, they're refrigeration trucks, they're huge.
Exactly.
They're pretty good sized.
Yeah, and some of them are even 10-wheelers, I think.
Yeah, they need a big turn rate.
Yep, and so we were trying to leave that open, so that it made it easier for them to move around. And also for snow work, too, you know, you put the islands in there.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna hit a curb? You don't wanna knock on a couple curbs?
No, especially when it's all pavement around it, they don't send it, they do it.
We're also thinking and working, you know, during the construction process, there's a possibility we might wanna rotate that 90 degrees to pull the, you know, pull it, you know, a little bit more away from where the trucks are backing up, so. But it's, it's just, it's one of those, everywhere else, we've gotten all the islands and everything else.
And obviously, you know, our thought was we're finishing off that lower level, because that's, that's gonna be their facility. We wanna make it look nice, we're doing our landscaping. But the upper level is still kind of up into what's gonna happen in the future. So, you know, we're providing usage of it with the, for these trucks, because we have no place else to put those. But I think the client is hoping that something will happen up there sooner than later.
Makes sense to me.
Okay, I am turning over to the architects, Scott.
Hello, I'm Chris Hall of CH Architecture. Just starting with some images of the building, we're there. Sure, thank you. As you can see, it's in pretty dilapidated condition. So, you know, we're planning to upgrade the whole thing here. Repaint the whole outside, patch, it needs to be patched. We're gonna consolidate the existing canopies into one large canopy in the middle with a ramp, and just upstairs here, dual entries, because we're gonna end up with two separate spaces on the, on the upper level, but wanna have the flexibility in the future if some, one tenant would like to take both spaces and centrally access. And then, you know, we have existing garage doors here, then we're gonna infill with glass. Some nice landscaping all along the front. This is the back, the loading docks are, this was that side parking area. Elevationally, there's no actual change to the building envelope itself, all the same as it was. Just adding some windows here for where offices will be in the proposed usage. This is the lower level of the building, where the primary usage is gonna be. This is the distribution area. These are gonna be two storage units, and, you know, each of them has their own bathroom. Then, you know, this is the existing loading dock here, the existing loading dock staying. Accessible ramp here to get into the new facility. Currently, there's a mezzanine here, which we're gonna demolish out and build a new mezzanine over here, that's gonna house more of the office usage. The upper level, these are two tenant spaces, this is just open to below here. This is the mezzanine for the distribution center. Questions after, we'd happy to answer. Pass on to J.C. Shalit, who is a landscape architect.
Good evening. I do wanna refer to the color slide I have. Tracy Shalit, Tracy Shalit LLC, landscape architect, Deborah Connecticut. The landscaping for parcel two is, you know, one piece of a greater master plan that was approved previously. And keeping within the same framework of that master plan, the main concept along the entrance drive was to create an alleys, which is a row of trees on each side of the driveway. So since this is an enlargement of parcel two, you'll see that on one side, that alleys is reflected. But just keeping in mind that as part of the greater master plan, that will eventually, that will have two sides. And the majority of the plants in this planting concept are native, because we always want to support our habitat and improve our environment. So, as is mentioned previously, approximately 11% of what is now impervious, is impervious is going to become pervious, and those areas planted with trees, shrubs, perennials, and lawn. So another important part of this is to create a welcoming entrance in a sense of place at the main entrance drive. And that's done with flanking the driveway with oak trees, and there are layered shrubs underneath, most of which are native. Ilex labra, poetentilla, and again layered perennials, such as small ornamental grasses and flowers. So it really marks a sense of place there. And off of this plan, since this is an enlargement, there's a very existing mature oak tree up here. And we're sort of drawing upon that, and as part of the greater master plan, there are several oak trees creating a line along Route 111. And then as we progress south, this is the first oak tree that would appear on parcel two. And again, the flanking of the entrance, so we're sort of creating a theme of oak trees along Route 111. Another very important component of this plan is screening of the parking and screening from the roadway and the neighbors. So on the, on the east end of the parking lot, we would burn that area up slightly and create a mix of evergreen trees that are gonna grow quite tall over time. And they're interplanted with native shrubs to create a layered effect that'll be very beautiful and also functional in terms of screening. In front of the building, the east side of the building, there are foundation plantings proposed, with the primary tree being dogwood, which is native. And then there are foundation shrubs, it's a mix of deciduous and evergreen to really enhance the building for four seasons of the year, layering down to perennials and grasses. And then along the south side of the building, where the elevation drops down, there are more foundation plantings, primarily natives again. And they provide interest through berries and flowers and deciduous and evergreen. And we have a couple lilacs in this area as well for the fragrance. And then in this area, we have more screen planting, a mix of three different types of evergreens that will grow quite tall over time and help to soften things and screen that area as well. Along the northern hillside, there's a north-facing hillside sloping down from this parking area. There is a bit too steep for grass, so that area is a great candidate for a ground cover that will just fill in and blanket over time. It's actually an evergreen ground cover that will get blue flowers for a couple months of the year. That basically covers the landscaping for parcel two. Are there any questions?
What percentage are native plants that you're putting in?
I would approximate 60 to 70%. I can get back to you with an exact number. And I would just like to point out, any plants that are not native, they're not native for a reason in that, for example, the evergreen screen trees, it's very tough to find a native evergreen screen tree that will perform well, that is available from a nursery, and isn't a liability over time. And the last thing we want is to be losing trees, so we'd like to get the right plant and the right place from the get-go. So unfortunately, we're very limited with our native options for the evergreen trees.
Okay, do, any questions from the commissioners?
None. I said, how many trucks are you gonna park out there, you don't, John?
If I can.
Mr. Anthony Galbo, owner.
Great, I'm Anthony Galbo, president of Galbo Provisions. Just wanna start by thanking my team, you know, I'm really excited for this project, I wanna start with that. We've been in business for 43 years, based in Fairfield, Connecticut. We're growing like crazy, I've been looking for a permanent home the last four years. And I've always identified when I was the right town, and I'm excited we finally found it. And I'm working with John and this team to bring my vision to life. You were asking how many trucks, we have about 16 trucks. Right now, we were talking about the swing size, those trucks are about 40 feet long right now. They're big, they're the biggest trucks you could get that aren't tractor trailers, because right now I'm running my business as if it's a mobile warehouse. So what this is gonna allow me to do is have a permanent home, allow me to continue to expand, because right now I'm almost at a point where I can't continue the way I'm going, and this is gonna bring me to the next level. So I'm really excited about this. We're family business, we've been in the area forever. We serve a lot of customers, you know, A&amp;S Deli, Homeplate, we do local colleges, local schools. We're a local family business, just looking for a permanent home, so.
And when you plug them in, they, it's for the refrigeration part of it, right?
No, so those plugs are actually for the diesel. I'm sorry, yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, those plugs are for the diesel. So diesel trucks is, you know, you get into wintertime, that diesel gel up.
Oh, you don't run any?
No, they're not gonna be running refrigeration overnight. The plan for the business is all the refrigerated products gonna be in the coolers. We're building a 7,000 square foot refrigerated cooler, a 300 square foot freezer. And then overnight, no, I don't, I don't wanna spend on diesel overnight, you know, I don't want that.
No, I wasn't sure that if you're gonna run the refrigerators.
Yeah, no, no, I don't wanna run that, I don't wanna run those, because it ends up, it's expensive.
No, no, I just, I was just considering that, if you were, noise and stuff like that.
Yeah, no, no.
You're not gonna do that, you're not gonna plug it in for diesel to keep it centered.
Yeah, just.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I have.
True.
Is there gonna be retail?
My business is not retail, it's wholesale only. We are just business to business.
Okay, thank you.
How are you gonna fuel these things?
Fuel? There's a gas station down the street, you know, I wanna, I'd like to cut a deal with them. You got that many trucks, you'll be getting, get a break with the price of diesel right now. But that's the goal, I mean, that gas station being right around the corner is a home run for us. It's a good location.
You want on 34, right?
Yeah.
Henny, penny.
You're talking about.
Been there sometime. So I'm still stuck on the landscape thing, because it's fresh on my mind, because we had a subcommittee meeting the other day. And the native plants, we got a, we got a presentation per se on native plants. And I think we were gonna do something.
Well, some towns are requiring a.
A higher percentage than 60 to 70%.
Are you familiar with, I think Trumbull might have a.
Some towns, I'm seeing this, and it's not always written someplace in the regulations. It's been more of, maybe perhaps more like a voluntary thing that some applicants are doing in some towns. If I can elaborate on that a little bit, sorry, unless you have more to say, okay. All of the deciduous trees on this plan are native, it's the evergreens that some are non-native. We do have some Pisia abes, which is the Norway spruce, but again, they're such great performers, and they're not a liability, they stay. It's rare to lose one. And we have some Green Giant Arborvitae, which some towns accept as a native. It's technically a hybrid, but it's the Thuyastandishai. And we probably have, sorry, that's too small for me to read. But, thank you so much. So the Green Giant Arborvitae, we have six of those, we have 10 of the Norway spruce. And then we just have three of the Serbian spruce, which again is a great performer, and that's mixed in for a different color and texture to contrast with the others. And then the majority of the shrubs are native. And even the few shrubs that are not native, they provide a lot of habitat, they attract bees and butterflies. They're not invasive, they're just not native, but they still can provide value, ecological value. For the perennials, I would say, I can get back to you again with the exact numbers, but I'd probably say 70 to 80% of the perennials are native. And this is something that we can revisit, you know, if we can make it a condition of the approval with the owner's, you know, agreement to perhaps increase some of those, I'd just be reluctant.
Like I said, the only reason why I bring it up is, it's, it's fresh, it's fresh in, subcommittee came up, it really Monday. It's gonna be fresh on everyone's plate, and, and the only reason why I bring it up, I know, I know generally we've had crazy landscape plans in the past here. Some buildings look more like nurseries than they actually do what their business is. I'm not asking for that, I'm just saying, being that Monday, we literally got, we got a presentation on native plants, it's just something that's fresh to the commission.
None of that's been put in our regulations though, yet, correct?
No, this will be.
Put in regulations.
Okay, but there was talk about putting a.
Yeah, John, yeah.
Not yet.
And a little bit on the native, you know, one of the things we did is start looking out to see, because a good majority of the master plant plantings are native. And one of the things we're having great difficulty in is getting native trees and plants. There's only a handful of nurseries in the state that make them, and most of them grow them for the, for wetlands restoration work. If you've ever seen a tree that you get for wetlands restoration work, it is not grown to be pretty or to be put in front of your business. It's, you know, and a lot of the stuff is very small, it's, it won't, we can get a native, but it won't meet your caliber dimensions that are requirement in other sections of regulations. So you have to be aware that if you ask for one thing, you're gonna have to give in on another thing, because we can't do it all, and it all has to be if available, because native species are, there's literally, I mean, if, and if you look at, there's a website, gonative.org. It's a nonprofit organization about, you know, putting out native. And in their website, on the bottom, it says, not all areas are suitable for, you know, native plants because of. suitable for, you know, native plants because of the heat of pavement, the configuration of the building, the fact that they're being put on the north or the south or the east or the west, and that you have to just use a professional landscape designer," which we've done in this case, "to create the best blend of landscape aesthetic and habitat." And I think Tracy's done a phenomenal job.
I'm not doubting Tracy's work at all. I'm just saying it's something that just came up fresh on Monday, and, um, there's nothing written in stone as of today, but I'm just saying, as of Monday, it came right in front of the subcommittee, and it was just a point of concern going forward. That's all. I'm done.
I think in many cases, it's wise to mix up the type of plantings, as the indigenous species are not always the best choice. The property can quickly become overwhelmed with insects, and from a functional standpoint, they may not do the proper job. So I'm perfectly good with the fifty, sixty percentile. Other than that, you know, uh, thanks to Mr. Galbo for clearing up what exactly is going on over there. It sounds like it could be a good addition to the property, and it looks like you have a good, good vision and plan going forward. So I have no other questions.
All right, then, um, let's go to the public. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on the application before us?
Good evening. Lois Spence, Twenty-Nine Partridge Drive. I have no issues with the application itself, but I was just looking up plants because I'm a native plant person myself. And the one that I did have concern with was the periwinkle vinco minor. It's considered invasive. So, and there's a thousand plants that are planned. So I would encourage the applicant and you to investigate other options. There must be something else out there, a combination rather than something. It's not terribly invasive. It's not like some of the horrible ones that we have, but it is not terribly invasive. So I wanted to just put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Periwinkle. Okay, go ahead.
Plant waters going on here.
Um, me, I just would like to point out that the vinco minor is on a somewhat isolated hillside. It's not adjacent to any woodland borders. It in fact has paving on the north side and the south side, basically on all sides, and then around it is maintained lawn. So I, in reality, I don't see that going anywhere because my understanding is that it would spread laterally. So unless it's adjacent to a woodland or a natural area, it should not be moving from that area. And if it's a real concern, an edge could be put in around it, but I don't think it's necessary because mowing around it would be an option to keep it where it should be. Our options for that hillside are quite limited because we need something to blanket, blanket it and stabilize it, and it cannot be lawn. So, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment tonight? Online, any members of the public? Hearing none, then we'll back to the applicant.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I call Chris and John Kimball to the front? As the commission is aware, there's multiple buildings. The first applicant that we heard last month, there's three buildings. There's two buildings with this. John, can you cover the color again, and Chris?
Sure.
Uh, this is something, the color is something that the Architectural Review Board embraced, but I want, you have the final say.
Yes.
So I want you to look at the color. They want to complement all the building. This is what we're going to look at driving up 111 and down 111. But I want you to feel
John Kimball, the director, Chris Hall. The architecture, you know, the, um, the Architecture Review Board reviewed the proposal. Um, the, basically, it's a, you know, kind of a gray-blue light, you know, lighter-toned building. Originally, we came in with a darker building. The owner, actually, was concerned about heat load based on the darker building. We're going to, um, use complementary colors to this building on Building One, which is directly adjacent to it. Most of the other buildings are a little bit removed, but these two buildings almost function in unison. And in conjunction with us building out our building, because we'll be Anthony's neighbors, we're going to use colors to complement this architectural color scheme. So, um, other than that, I think...
Yeah, I think that covers it pretty much. I believe they said that we would have to come for final approval on the exact chip color.
They want a paint chip.
Yeah. Three significant improvements are taking place, which the commission is aware. The landscaping, both on the perimeter and internal, the buildings being refurbished, and the exterior color, what you are seeing. So it's important that you feel comfortable. And third is the new driveway that's going in. And as John indicated, he will be doing it before the CO is issued for this particular occupant. So those are three profound, significant activities taking place.
The, uh, I mean, the entire master plan will be implemented before this building is ready for occupancy. So, um, all the plantings on 111, the entire new driveway turnaround, all the new...
You see it on the screen up on...
Yeah, I don't, uh, well, you're seeing half of the, half of the roadway, but both sides of the roadway and both entrances, uh, again, this entrance and the lower, the northern entrance have both received approval from TOT for that work. So both entrances will be upgraded, and all landscaping will be installed. So it's going to be a huge improvement. We're talking about gateway entrance to the town. This will be a remarkable improvement.
What's the timeframe?
If they would like to be in there yesterday, he's pushing that to be, you know, if they want to be in for the first of the year, we have to push like crazy to get this thing done. He is absolutely out of space where he is, and he needs to be in the building as quickly as we can get it going. So Chris will be drawing as fast as his hand can draw, and then we'll work with Rick and get it going with it immediately. Yeah, we'll be in in the next couple of months with parcel one also, because we're moving forward immediately with that also.
What's the color of the roof slash material?
It's existing metal.
Yeah, it's actually a whiter. It's much more like, yeah, you know, white steel white material, so it doesn't catch the heat.
Actually, even in the model, it's light color, but the way the shadows worked on the rendering makes it look like a natural color.
Thank you. Okay, then, um, you want us to close the hearing tonight? Yeah. You have more questions?
No, I just want to ask a question.
Oh, yes.
Yes, well, I do. I have one question.
All right. Leon have questions?
No, I have one, I have a question.
You never have one question.
John, is there any on the periwinkles? Any other things you could put there besides that?
Well, the periwinkle is actually, it's common Vinco. Everybody, half the people in town have it in their, in their yard, you know. It's, it's actually grown by a local nursery in Monroe. But we'd absolutely be willing to take a conservation...
As it grows.
...mix or a meadow mix or, you know, wildflower mix or something else if, if that's troubling to the commission, you know. So...
I mean, we had this thing here. We're just trying to...
We understand that. We're, you know, we're trying to be...
That's the only...
...sensitive. So, Tracy, one more.
Yeah, I can speak about that, the pros and cons. So the Vinco minor is, is quite low maintenance. Once it fills in, it's usually, you know, it's, say, twelve inches on center. So yes, it's a thousand plants, but these are little tiny plugs that are going to fill in over time, choke out the weeds, maybe it need mulch the first season or two, but then it creates this really low maintenance blanket that is four to six inches tall. Now, another option could be an all-native meadow seed mix, maybe a showy wildflower mix or something, but aesthetically, it isn't always as pleasing as it sounds because every year, different species pop up, undesirables can get in there, weeds, and it would have to be weed-lact, I'd say, a couple times a year, but before it gets weed-lact, it can be very unsightly. So just sort of the balance of aesthetics versus habitat benefit. It's a balance.
How does this particular species typically spread? Just on the...
Laterally, from what I've seen. I don't think it's anything...
Not going to get across the road? It's not going to...
No, it'll be, where it is, it should be very easily contained. Um, I'm trying to think of an alternative native ground cover that is available from nurseries. It's just very difficult because there's a plant called bearberry, but I just don't know its availability in that amount. And I think that animals like to eat it as well. So if deer get into the site...
Yes, deer, deer.
But I think the bears might get to, but luckily, probably aren't too many in Monroe.
All right.
Oh, no.
Beer, we have beer. Oh, we got beer.
Be careful when you're planting these.
I don't think we don't have any. We got beer. We got a lot of beer.
Right near where you're going to be.
They got a provision store right there. Have one of my...
Ice.
He breaks them.
So it doesn't spread by seed, though? It's only if you guys abandon the property and let it grow out of control?
I mean, usually, when I've seen it get into woodlands, literally because it's in someone's yard, it's on a border, and it has crept over thirty years into the woods. And then it, I haven't seen it really out competing the native species, though, because it's so low-growing. So it's not as a shading something else out like burning bushwood or barberry wood. So, yes, technically, it is invasive. That's why we use it in a very manicured, contained area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? If not, then, uh, go ahead if you like to ask.
I think the only outstanding item that we discussed it was Scott's comment on, on the pavement and in terms of the islands on the top part. If the commission wants them, feels they're necessary, that's the condition of approval he would accept. So I think it's the only outstanding item that we have.
You can discuss that during deliberations. All right, then, we're closed the hearing. Next on the agenda pending meeting minutes, I don't see them in the packet, July twenty-second.
We stapled that.
And I'd like to move right into deliberations on this application that we just closed. We do have a draft approval. Yeah. We're not back. We're sitting here. I think with the reduction of the impervious surfaces, I'm not, I wouldn't make it too yellow with those caps, those landscape caps, especially with the amount of truck activity that's going to be going on back there. I don't know about the rest of the commissioners on that.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like there's potential for them to want to develop it later, and, you know, if it's just going to get torn up in the next few years, I don't really see a point of having to do it.
Question on this side of the table?
I'm, I'm never in favor of excessive islands and caps and that kind of thing. Snow removal, plot maintenance, they've just become a disaster after a while and else. So, good without them.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, this guy's got forty-foot-long trucks. Islands in there?
So do you all have the pool in front of you?
I have it.
All right.
I read it beside, yeah.
Well, hold on, just make sure Leon...
No, he took it. It was under my stuff.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
So in this approval, we have, um, no parking of tractor-trailers shall be permitted. No hours of operation on Sunday through Saturday for six P.M.
Or A.M.
For A.M. to six P.M. Construction of new access driveway shall be completed prior to the occupancy of the building.
And I'm adding, the commission is adding two more. Adherence to the requirements of the Town Engineering's Report, which is the second review dated eight, three, twenty-one, with the exception of the landscape island requirement. And six is the consensus to replace the periwinkle with an all-native shade mix or alternative?
No.
No.
No. So, scratch that.
And leave that.
Let the periwinkle live. It kind of matches the building, too.
Periwinkle matches a gray building?
Almost.
Compliment.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
I, I also left out, there's the retail component. As the commission heard, this is a two-story building. The lower levels, the distribution office upstairs is room for two retail tenants, okay?
Retail tenants right now.
So I wanted to add that in there. And the chairman read the...
Oh, I know tenants at this point, correct?
Correct.
No tenants at the...
So it is a mixed use, meaning distribution and then retail. Your house, distribution, office, and retail.
Any other discussion or questions? By then, we'll, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve SEP dash two zero two one dash zero nine, file number one six three four A.
Okay, I have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. We'll call the bill starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosia, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mainy, yes.
Westland, yes.
Yes is habit. It's approved.
Welcome to Monroe.
Luck, good luck for January.
Hey, John, could you let Bill do photos of before and after of all the buildings?
Guys, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
All right, so we have one other deliberation that is in your packet, an approval on relation text amendment RA twenty twenty-one dash oh-two. This is the overlay district. We were waiting for the map, which I believe we have for us tonight.
You can thank Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Good job, Scott.
All right. Your official zoning map will have two new district designations. The Main Street Design District Overlay, and that is the overlay. Remember, the underlying zone doesn't change. And then you will get individual petitions to go for a special development district within these areas. And it's all the Route twenty-five corridor, fifteen hundred feet from the edge of the right-of-way. That really was established, just to clarify it, for the one twenty-seven Main Street because that is deep. It's kind of like an interior lot, and it's a big parcel of land. The commercial portions of one eleven here, you have one that's a little fragmented, and then the commercial portions on thirty-four.
Can we just go over what the end marks are? What is that little fragmented one there? What are we looking at? Is that, um...
B one.
Uh, but where, where, that's...
That is right.
Is that the Stevenson and Goodwill Liquor Store, or is that...
Let's get a little closer.
That's the liquor store.
Right, because that's...
And that's, is it Stevens, Stevens, some of them? It's tiny age.
What do you have for them?
That's got to be the liquor store.
That's the liquor store. That's the new liquor store.
Liquor store, and then...
This is Big Y, and that's the liquor store.
Right. And then you have the child daycare across the street. That's a residential.
Residential, but that's the other, um, what's the, they sell the...
Isn't it Stevens?
No, Steeves.
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 Right, Steeves, yeah. Office of Supply. Steeves Office of Supply, that's what that is.
All right.
Oh, next to Echo, that's the endpoint.
That's the endpoint.
And then up there, we're just looking at...
Gas station.
Gas station all the way down.
And then here with the pizzas, Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, that's a B. Two there, right?
That is correct.
Right.
And then 25, we have to talk.
This is really limited except, the really big one is Stevenson lumber. You already seen the master plan. You've approved two out of the four. And the third one's going to be the trust building, and that's going to be manufacturing. So it's pretty much all set for Stevenson.
The whole, all of 25, we're not excluding.
Right.
And it's the entire I. Zone.
So this is the area that you will see petitions submitted with some, with the flexibility in mind. Remember the case in point in Newtown with the Traxford tractor supply? That was a residential zone. They had a difficult time, you know, developing that much. Well, we've only seen.
I guess you got all that on that one side then.
It's been, well, that's all we've seen so far is one interested party and what we're putting forward. Ideally, once we do, we're going to see a lot.
If you adopt it tonight, this is step one. It's the text amendment. Step two is the map amendment. You'll have to identify the overlay district and then we'll.
Just to be clear, we still have, we still have ability to approve and deny.
Each one is in a separate application.
Yeah. We get, we approve this right now, it could effectively mean nothing. Nothing could ever get built.
Right.
If they keep coming in front of us with things that we don't.
Right.
That we don't want to change.
You know, you use your legislative hat on this own.
I'm just saying, I want to make sure that that ability is there.
And you're using, you're using your P. O. C. D. As the guide.
No, absolutely. The only thing that really, really scares me is not, is not this commission. It's the commissions after us.
Yeah, things are changing.
Because I'm not going to be here forever, thank God, and.
At that point, those people got voted in and you got to assume that they got the best interest of the people that put them there in mind, right? Same reason why we have the best interest of the people that put us here.
Correct.
If it changes, it changes.
Right. But the other thing is that nothing happens with this unless you change the zone. You'd have to change.
There's two.
Yes.
There's two processes.
Gives us a tool, we don't have to use the tool.
Right.
Listen to me. I get it. I'm just stressing my concern. That's all.
Well, this is a major leap of faith.
Yes, it is.
I remember when Shelton went to the planned development district in the late 70s. It was this opening the door to the major shopping center, the Stop and Shop. That was all farmland. And then Richardson Vicks came in on 75 acres, which was a residential area. So some good things came and then it got out of control.
And Rob, I understand, you know, the concern with stepney. I just feel like if we leave them out of this, it's just going to be putting them so far behind and.
Behind what?
Now you have the opportunity.
What are you putting them behind, though?
Well, they would have to, they can still only do what those areas are zoned for. If a project comes in front of us that is, hey, this is something that is preserving this character of this area and it's a new, because face it, right now, the character of some of that area is falling down buildings. So, you know, this gives an opportunity.
It wasn't falling down building.
That's one too many, in my opinion. Shouldn't have any falling down building.
We've had a mound on 25 for the last four years.
Again, and again, this, this could be something that changes.
Too soon, you know, making such a drastic change and doing it inclusive of every commercial area.
So I, I think what it does, though, is so again, like somebody comes in with a drastic change and we can say, no. We can say, no, this isn't going to fit here. We're not going to let you flip it over to even discuss this. But again, it gives the opportunity for someone to say, hey, this is an idea I had. It looks good. It looks like something that could benefit. And they might come in front of us. We might all be like, wow, I mean, this is, you know, a home run for the community, for the town, for everything, from what it looks like. And this gives us the ability for, to at least come in front of us. We could still say no, but at least we're, you know, we don't know what people might have in mind and what could come out of this. So I like the idea that we're kind of opening the door a little bit.
Try opening up the door a little bit, man, man. You're, you're.
No, it is a little bit because none of it has to actually. That's it.
Giving them a chance. We still have two steps.
We're bringing them to the table and we can still tell them, no.
Correct. Correct.
Overloading this town with high density housing is not something I'm interested in.
Absolutely. And I mean, and that's not something that this plan really allows because there's only three parcels that fit our size. That's why I don't want it to go down to like two or, you know, it should stay at that 15. And then you have those acres that can do, or those certain parcels that, yes, the ones that can do it are going to come in front of us with that. And we still, at that point, can say, hmm, no.
Not a good fit, right?
Yeah. Too, too dangerous for the schools, too, you know, whatever it might be. I just like this opportunity.
Protection's written in here.
Yeah, and I, I eliminated the payment in lieu of affordable that was deemed inappropriate because the state statutes are not strong yet. Stanford went on its own. Stanford's a major city, as you know, and they had a deal with the affordable housing. They have. It's worked well for them. But the enabling statutes are not there for this type of option. Will it be in the future? But right now, not.
Yeah, seemed like a cool idea, but.
Well, I mean.
We probably didn't have the power to do it.
Space. You're going to get a new two-lot subdivision. You're going to get some more money. And that, that's working.
Open space because, you know, spending money on open space makes sense. If we have, you know, $10,000, what are we going to spend it on, you know, in affordable housing? That means the town's going to have to build.
No, our housing authority. You heard our housing authority.
You can approve.
They're, they're not getting grants and their, their complex needs upgrades. That one, it can go because it's, it's, it's recognized as affordable by the state of Connecticut.
That doesn't improve our numbers, though.
No.
It's going to increase our units count.
Now, also, too, we left in the affordable housing plan. That affordable housing plan is going to be a supplement to the P. O. C. D. You are going to, you have to now recognize areas in town. So it's real. And obviously, property owners and investors are going to be watching when you have that public area. Because they're going to see, okay, that area potentially can have it. It's got to go before the commission, but if you do an 8-30G.
Doesn't matter.
You usually lose unless there's an environmental issue. So all these, you got some major land use issues confronting the commission. And you saw what the state did with the marijuana. I got a call today. This town's been proactive. You restricted, you prohibited it a couple of years ago. I got a call from a grower from Massachusetts where it's legal. And, and, oh, I also called Office of Policy and Management to confirm that our existing regulations are recognized by the state of Connecticut. A lot of towns were proactive several years ago when they saw the writing on the wall with the medical marijuana. Our regulations are valid. So it's prohibited for growing. It's prohibited for retail. Unless you decide otherwise.
It's your. It's prohibited for retail because we're.
Too small.
Too small.
Yeah.
It's just the growing that we could change in the future if we wanted to. Anyway, that's off topic.
Let's vote on this level.
All right, so we'll entertain a motion to accept this approved, to approve the zoning regulation text amendment R. A. 2021 dash 01.
I make a motion to approve R. A. H. dash 2021 dash 02, filed 1016E.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Not for the roll. Am I right?
Condon, yes?
Ambrosia, yes.
O'Reilly, yes? Mainey, yes?
Westland, yes.
Passes.
And the effective date is Friday 13th. 13th, yes.
Oh, my God, I just, I just guessed that, by the way. That was pretty funny, though.
Really?
Yeah. Friday 13th. Freddy Krueger.
Moving on, a correspondence.
You know what? Can we re-vote on that?
Do we have any correspondence, Rick?
Uh, no, David.
Moving on, number 12, Commissioner reports. Chairman has no report. Commissioner reports. Do any commissioners have any reports?
We have a new commissioner.
Potentially.
He's going to prove.
Do you know where he stands?
I don't know if he's gone in front of L. N. A. Or town council.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it was confirmed today the town clerk did not swear in. I left him a message and sent him an email. I did not hear back. So as the commission is aware, our next meeting is September 2nd, so hopefully he'll be sworn in by then.
Let Rob put the press on him. Well.
That's Smargliano.
Dominic.
Dominic.
Another Dom, pronouncing. Love two Doms.
He's been in town for forever.
Yeah, on the Z. B. A.
I think his father was a developer, construction guy.
Sure.
Anyway, the land use staff report.
Okay, you all have a copy of the town planners report. The August 3rd Z. B. A. Was canceled. Their next meeting is September 7th. We did receive two referrals from the site and council. 500 Moose Hill Road, replacement of antennae, and 1432 Monroe Turnpike, also replacement. These are the typical upgrades of the antennae. That was pretty straightforward. Site and council has complete control over that. Regulations Subcommittee Report. Last meeting was held on July 26th to discuss interior lots, repairing buffers, age-restricted reg text amendments, and the fill exemption. As I reported tonight to the commission and Mr. Metropolis, special counsel is preparing a legal opinion on that. What staff is going to do is to continue to look at the history, but also how we have scrutinized landowners from arbitrarily allowing filling and then removal. It seems to me that this commission has always been involved with that. It should be. I am going to make that, I am going to make that recommendation, but it's going to be based on past history. That the commission still needs to take action on filling, even if it's temporary and removal. We have regulations in place for landscaping in residential areas. That's not the issue. The issue is commercial and industrial areas. Zoning enforcement, 485 Pepper Street, that continues to be monitored. Zoning Citation Program, there are no hearing items this reporting period. Anti-light, we're continuing to work with 337 Monroe Turnpike. As the commission has seen, all the vegetation is down. We are now working with the appropriate board's legal notices, and that's going to be demolished. 1586, that's across the street from Stevenson, the post office. And he did some painting, roof repair. He still has to cover the area of storage that faces 111, so we're still working with them. Fortunately, these have all been voluntarily based, which is good. Outdoor dining, no new submissions for this reporting period. And our next planning and zoning meeting scheduled is September 2nd. No new residential permits were issued during this period, which is kind of ironic. No, but there, there's a need for housing stock world, I mean, nationwide. It's just that the town doesn't have a lot of lots.
No lots.
And to be honest with you, I think the market really wants to do the multifamily as opposed to single family, but there are individuals that still want single family detached. But there's not a lot of lots out there. And you will, you will be seeing a two-lot subdivision on Moose Hill. And that, that involves the demolition of an older house.
Cool.
And we'll see everyone September 2nd. And Mr. Chairman, I think we need to meet, if we can, in August for our subcommittee. I want a continued discussion on the interior lots. I will have feedback from the police and fire on that. And I think we'll probably discuss the legal opinion.
Yes.
And you can do that in executive session.
All right.
Is everyone around for the subcommittee in August or?
Yeah, man.
Got to let me know. I'm in the Pepper Street.
They. They are still want to move ahead with the recycling plant.
Now, they haven't done anything.
Or they're approved.
No, I know that.
No, zero.
Staging area.
So what percent are you at?
Zero. I'm at zero percent.
So you're right. I talked to him today at another matter.
I understand that, but it's a mess.
Yeah. They're using it for the Pepper Street reconstruction.
It's not part of the state's construction.
Like, we have two things going on, the legal activity that we're bringing in material. We have a cease and desist. They're preparing for the recycling facility. You know, the footings were put in, imparted foundation. No, the footing's the foundation, right. And they put that on hold. And they're also using it for the staging area. The town said, instead of using the shoulder of the road, we would use a site which worked out for the.
But they're still not processing a road?
No, we're under the cease and desist.
Are you sure about that?
Because Public Works is ordering materials from, and it's coming from Stanford. But we have to continue to inspect it weekly.
What about on guard a rope?
And he's going to be coming in for that subdivision in September.
He's still working in guard a rope?
No, he's destroying it, and that's going to get cleaned up. We have a cease and desist on that, too.
He's been working.
That I haven't seen.
Oh, I have.
So staff will continue to address those two issues.
Leon put 60 hours at the mechanic shop and 40 more on the road.
Okay, thank you, Rick. There's no other business. We'll challenge a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. To adjourn, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.